Yep. Yeah, alright. Get ready to go live Ben, so give me a hot second, okay? The stream is going. Waiting for a notification and we are live. I understand absolutely, definitely. We are live, it's happening now. Oh lord. I'm looking at what's going on in my house right now. See this kid with the boxing gloves on? I know you can't see it Ben, I'm just... It's my house! Oh, I'm still calling in a minute. Okay. And just, that's, that's uh, my uh, my friend. Alright y'all, you'll know the deal, we do this every week at 4 o'clock. I'm hitting the button. Hey, here we are, that's right, once again it's the One Night Show, we do this every Friday, I'm sorry, every Sunday at 4 o'clock. What day am I on? I don't know, it's all happening at the same time. I'll have to rip my microphone down. Yeah, we're gonna let it go for a minute, so. Hey guys, we got a great show for you today. It's gonna be incredible, incredible. We got Ben Kalos on the show today, that's incredible. Councilmember, our first elected official is on the show! So I'm really happy to be doing that. We're gonna have a big conversation with him about what's going on with his campaign. Let me just work these mics out real quick. So we're gonna talk about that. Please guys, if you got the notification, you're gonna wanna share this show, cuz this is off the chain right now. This is big. I'm checking my thing right here. And did I get a notification? Sandrea, you got a notification?
I've been sharing.
Mike Jones, you got a notification?
I'll share it right now.
Stan Morse, you get a notification?
I got it right now.
That we need to be sharing right now. My number one intern, did you get a notification? Share it to your friends in the school, come on!
Queens College.
Queens College is in the house y'all. Aw man, it feels so good to be back. Okay, there it is, I got the notification. Alright, I gotta share, I'm talking about sharing, I gotta share too. Yeah. Feeling really good today? Doing a lot of stuff. This conversation might go long Ben, I ain't mad about it.
One nice hour, one nice hour.
Yeah, one nice hour. She's like, one nice hour Rock.
Yeah, 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 he's campaigning, he has work to do.
1, 2, 3, and... Once again, this is the One Night Show. Everyone welcome me to it, we do this every Sunday at 4 o'clock. I am one of your hosts, Rock Logic. We have the, um, the super activist, Sandrea Coleman in the building. We have my main man Stan Morse, who's running for Queens Borough President.
Yep.
And my right hand man Mike Jones, who helps me holding things down here in the studio, he's also an engineer. And my number one intern, she's over there hanging out with the headphones on, and she's about 10 seconds behind me before she realizes it don't matter what you're talking about. Should I count that? Let me see.
She good, she good, she good.
Okay, cool, so, this has been a big week guys, I mean, um...
Yes, yes.
Stan kicked off his new show today, which was tremendous. Um, Sandrea, your week is always big, so let's just get into it right now. What's going on this week with you?
Well, my week-
What happened last week?
My, my week has been busy and blessed as always. Throughout the week, I've been networking and touch base with Stan as he launched his new show today. What was it called? Hip Hop Health and Politics? And it's gonna be a great show, it was good, and you know, it's, uh, about his run as well for Queens Borough President, and I'm humbly to be the executive producer of the show, so, um, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
And, um, too, I'm just gonna jump into Tuesday, I had a great Zoom check-in meeting with the faith-based leaders that help Homes and Isaacs serve food, feed the community, so we, we had just a logistic, uh, look at, you know, what we're gonna do into this next quarter. Thursday, I must say, I am fully vaccinated, fully vaccinated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. How'd you like it? How did it treat you?
Just my arm is a little sore, no side effects thankfully, I'm thankful to God that I'm good.
You didn't get sick, you didn't get the flu?
No fever, no nothing, I was good, so, I'm grateful.
You're the only person that I know personally that's been fully vaccinated.
I'm fully vaccinated, feel good.
I am too. What did you take?
Moderna.
Moderna, so you got the two shots?
Yes, I'm good now.
Right, oh man, awesome.
So I'm jumping, I'm gonna leap into Saturday, so the Homes Isaacs Coalition, along with the faith-based, uh, partners that we, uh, work with, and Isaac's Center, uh, we fed the community again, the Homes and Isaacs community, we also distributed PPE. This, uh, new quarter, we are, uh, trans- transitioning into, uh, bi-monthly now, we were feeding residents once a month.
Okay.
And now, now, I don't hear myself.
Good, I just wanted to figure something out.
Okay, okay, how's that now?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so, this bi-weekly now, so we moving it to bi-weekly, and my, my sound is okay? Y'all hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, we got rid of that, bing, 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 okay. So once again, on Saturday, I joined Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney for her 12 congressional district caucus. Her guest yesterday was Sean Donovan. So I queried him on how would he preserve our homes within NYCHA? And he explained that RAD and the blueprint and other, those other privatization that we call schemes, um, does not have to have the privatization component. He explained it a whole different way, so I'm connecting with these people, so hopefully we can get them on the show. And shout out to you, yes, for BLM, I'm one of the organizers, we've been out there since June 2nd, today is our 314th consecutive day. So that was my week, and happy to have my, uh, council member on our show today. So happy to have him.
Beautiful. Stan Morse!
Yeah, well, as, as we stated earlier, we kicked off our show today, health, hip hop, and politics, so a big shout out to Sandrea and Rock for helping make, making this happen. Uh, Sugar Ray who came on the show, Ladaska, Freestyle Eddie, Mike, and all the people that was involved, Elena who tuned in, uh, my boy Hank from high school, uh, who tuned in as well, and some of the others. It was a great kickoff, and, um, I'm still buzzing from that. You know, after the organizing work, um, we're still finding with Ravenswood, you know, I went down to the management office again, uh, this week with some residents, and, and same old story to get the brush off. Um, and I'm starting to notice that a lot of residents are being overcharged in rent. And, um, at the same time, they're, they're actually threatening people with eviction, and they're wrong, and they're in calculations, you know, so, we, um, we had a meeting with the new manager in Ravenswood, Ms. Liverpool. And, um, she supposedly is going to rectify the situation where a resident is being charged for two apartments.
Oh wow.
One apartment was deemed inhabitable, so she had to move because her apartment was no longer able to be lived in. They moved it to another apartment, and so now they're charging her rent for both apartments.
Wow.
Now, how can you charge somebody rent for an apartment that's not even habitable? You know, which is insane, you know, so they're saying this is the NYCHA rules. So I question, I think to them, if those are the rules of NYCHA, then the rules have to be changed.
What about this, it's a stupid rule!
Right, it's a dumb rule, how are you having somebody pay, she's $2,000 a year now?
Wouldn't be me.
So she's fighting back, she, um, she's withholding her rent, she has her rent in, in ESCO, uh, which is her legal right to do that, and, um, she's not paying another dime until they get it straight. Uh, they sent her a letter the same day we went, they, she got a big foul, and so there's no way in the world they went through that whole file in that little bit of time, so they, they immediately shot a letter in, under her door, in like an hour or two after we went in the office. You know, basically saying, yes, you owe this money, and, uh, we're looking to maybe take your apartment.
Amazing, that's NYCHA.
What, the uninhabitable one?
Yeah, so, so now they, well, I'm not sure.
Are they gonna evict her out of the uninhabitable apartment of this?
They're gonna evict her out of the one she's living in now, which is, which is habitable.
Of course they wouldn't take the bad apartment, man!
Right, this is, this is-
NYCHA rules!
Right, this is the most, this is, this is NYCHA, this is the type of dysfunction, uh, that, that many residents deal with, when you go, you know, they have nothing to say to them, so, you know, we're gonna fight back, and, um, that's, that was my week.
Mike Jones, the ninja! We never know what Mike Jones is saying, under that mask. What's up Mike Jones?
Well, um, this week, I'm a little smooth, but I'm supposed to be, um, doing this little film with people that have sleep apnea actually.
Okay.
And, um, I guess we're supposed to be letting everybody know, I'm supposed to make a film about me, I'm supposed to tell them my whole, cuz I have sleep apnea, so, I don't know, my whole life story, and it was a rough life story to be honest.
Like a documentary, good, congratulations! Proud of you!
Tough, it was like, it's actually 2016, right before I found out I had sleep apnea, that was rough. I was going through a lot of mental situations that turned to a lot of physical situations, look, I'm getting a lot of weight, I was actually like 178.
Little skinny guy!
The most, I gained 40 pounds in two weeks at one point in time.
Wow.
And that was ridiculous, but, um, yeah, I was supposed to make a film about that, and, you know, I also did my little after classes, and also my regular school also did as well.
Awesome.
And I also watched these two movies that just actually put some thing on me, it was, I don't know if y'all know about Judas and the Black Messiah, that was a great movie.
Yeah, I saw that, real phenomenal movie.
Awesome.
And then I also seen this other movie called, um, Two Distant Strangers or something like that, it was on Netflix, Netflix, um, about how this police kept, he, this dude, this black dude kept leaving his house, his, this girl's house, trying to get back to his house with his dog. And every time he went outside, a police actually killed him, he was like in this loophole. And no matter what he did, he always got killed by the same police, even though he tried to do different things, the police always killed him for some reason.
Wow.
Even when he tried to talk to the police to give him a ride home, the police gave him a ride home, seemed like he was a nice guy, and then still killed him.
That's a rough movie, so, so now, okay, in, in official tradition on how we do it on the show, we're gonna turn it over to our special guest, special guest, big shout out to Councilman Ben Kalos, Ben!
Thank you Rock for the intro, uh, nice to meet you Stan and Mike, please do call me Ben, uh, Sandrea does. Sandrea and I see each other quite often, I actually just saw her on Friday, uh, and, uh, I'll tell you, we actually see each other at, no, at, at least once a month, usually more than that, I do something crazy. Something that most politicians would consider career suicide, and that is, every single month, I have open office hours where anyone can come talk to me about whatever they want. And, and I gotta tell you, Sandrea Coleman's there every single month for my first Friday, and I, I am very lucky to have her in my community and have her as a leader. Uh, we'll, we'll get into why I'm so lucky to have a NYCHA resident like Sandrea, like Keisha and so many others at Stanley Isaacs, cuz, uh, people may try to mess around with NYCHA, but not our, not our developments.
That's right.
I love that, so, once a month, people just come to your office and just talk to you?
We, we used to do it in person, now we do it over Zoom, now that Sandrea's got the vaccine, I got the vaccine, uh, I'll be fully vaccinated in 10 more days. But, um, yeah, listen, I work for residents, and if an elected official, if you, if you can't go see your elected official and know you're gonna see them in person, then they ain't doing, they're, they're not doing their job for you.
Right, that's right, that's right. That's very weird too, that's very, very weird.
I mean, I, I am astounded, I'm like, wow, you know, so, so Ben, what is the new venture? You're moving into something new from what I understand. You're looking for a higher office, a promotion?
Well, I'm running for Manhattan Borough President, and...
We gotta clap that, I don't know.
And I think-
You gotta absorb that for me.
Thank you, so, so the reason I'm running is because, I have something pretty flowery, talking about how everywhere else in America, people try to get out, if you get out, but here in New York City, we try to stay, and I'll just be frank and honest here. I'm afraid of getting priced out and pushed out of this city, and it seems like no matter how much money you make, it's never enough. And when I looked at all these politicians out there who keep selling out their communities so that they could raise money to run for a higher office, it's just like, the only way I'm gonna be able to stay here and raise a family, I've got a three-year-old daughter, is, uh, if I actually step up to the plate myself and protect public housing residents, protect affordable housing, and actually get it, because, Sandrea can voucher me, there isn't a person in this world I won't stand up to, and that's in particular, real estate developers, because, if you wanna ask where politicians get their money?
Right.
Real estate developers, and those real estate developers, politicians, $5,000 a pop. They give it, their spouse give it, all their kids give it, uh, it comes out to like $100,000, I gotta ask you, I gotta let, ask your listeners, ever give anyone $5,000?
Wow.
You know what people want in return? I'll tell you, I offered my wife a gift once, I asked her, I, I offered her a gift, and, uh, I expected her to spend the rest of her life with me, and now her daughter's three, so like, that's how that went, but...
That's how it went down.
If you've seen rounders, if you're sitting at the table and you can't spot the sucker, then it's you. And, uh, that's how politics has been working for way too long.
They, they say, they have another saying, it's kind of like that, and that is, if you're not on the menu, if, if, if you're, if you're not at the table, then you're on the menu.
That's right.
You're the fool, so, yeah.
We, we were, we had that happen to us when NYCHA told us about our, about the infill. And I don't remember how many meetings Sandrea went to, probably 75, maybe 100, and they kept telling us it was a done deal.
Yep.
And we beat them, but the whole time, it seemed like, uh, seemed like we weren't at the table, I wasn't even at the table, they didn't even want me there.
Yeah, and, and I sat with the former chair and, and her team, Emma Wolf and all of that, and, you know, a couple of times, Brian Holen, and it was basically just having these conversations, and they still trying to put it down our throat, but thankfully to Councilmember Ben Kalos and our other, uh, elected official allies and other allies, like, you know, Stan and others, we kept the fight going, so, and it's done, it's done, right?
Yep, they can't get it done under this mayor, so it, the price of, of our playgrounds, is literally they wanted to put a 50-story building on a playground, they're gonna leave NYCHA residents in the shadows of, uh, the wealthy. But not only do we have to beat this mayor, which we have, but we have to beat the next mayor, the mayor after that, and the mayor after that, until they get the point that, uh, NYCHA land is for NYCHA, it is for public housing, it is for affordable housing, it isn't for millionaires and billionaires to get richer, and to give, uh, wealthy people views over, uh, the rest of us.
Exactly, keep public housing public.
That's right. Ben, I have a question, because, and then we're gonna get into more specific things, you know, Sandrea has a list of questions.
No, I don't.
Listen, I saw a phone call.
No, you're lying.
I, but, but, uh, you know, cuz, and I'm sort of new to the politics thing, as a councilman, right? I mean, is there a, is there an office that you go to, you know, cast your vote, like the senate? Like, you guys all go and, and congregate in city hall and cast your votes, and if you do, how often do you guys go there, actually?
So according to the charter, the city council only needs to meet once a year, and that's called the charter meeting. And generally, we don't actually do any work at that meeting, we just do it to say we did it, but, um, unlike congress, and actually unlike the state legislature, which only meets January through June, city council meets year-round, we generally meet at least twice a month. Uh, we try to do it every two weeks unless there's Jewish holidays, or Easter, or things like that, so in April, we're gonna have meetings, uh, week after another, and ultimately, before the pandemic, we were at city hall, and so folks, if you wanted, you could actually stand at city hall, and, uh, I'll tell you lobbyists, stand at the doors of city hall, and kind of like, there's a gauntlet you have to go through, and I really wish we could get rid of lobbyists and replace it with, uh, NYCHA tenants. Down in front of, uh, city hall, every time we had a meeting, cameras rolling, I promise you, we'd actually be fully funding NYCHA as much as I'd like to.
So, so, so Ben, what you're telling me is that when you guys meet at city hall, right? I, I could go down there and stand in front of city hall and wait for you guys to come outside?
That's correct, uh, I'll, I'll tell you, there's a couple of side doors that sometimes the mayor might use, but, uh, we're, we're online right now, but once we get back in person, there's that, also, right now, we're doing our city budget, we've got more money than we know what to do with from the federal government, and now's the time to tell Albany, and the corrupt Albany legislature, that $200 million for NYCHA is a spit in the face, and that they need to give us the billions we need.
Yeah.
That we need direct support from Joe Biden and Chuck Schumer, and I think they're going to be able to do that, I, we, we need billions of dollars, not millions, and since I've been in the council, we've been questioning for $2 billion a year for NYCHA to get fully funded over the next 10 years, but I keep fighting for it, because at the end of the day, the worst slumlord in the city of New York is Bill de Blasio.
Yeah.
Well, call it out, say it, say it like it is. He's the king of the slumlords, he's, he's done it big.
Horrible, horrible.
Well, he's the best of the best, he's the best slumlord ever, I mean, let's just put it that way.
Yeah, and, and even over the 10-year period, to be honest, it doesn't, that doesn't help us, right, we need immediate money, immediate funding flushed in, immediately to help us, you know, so, because, we've been asking, you know, I think, I facilitated my first press conference in 2016 in January, and it was you and Richie Torres was the head of housing, we did that in front of city hall, and we were asking for fun, less money than we're asking for now. So, over the years, you know, our homes have deteriorated, deteriorated more and more, so, you know, we need, as I've been saying, the city-state and the federal government to fund NYCHA, and just fund us fully, and once they do that, then, then we can, you know, live more better, and they will probably, the waiting list would probably attract more, uh, middle and moderate people that can afford, you know, that can fit the, what is it, the criteria to move into public housing, because it is a mixed income bag, you know, everybody in NYCHA is not dirt poor, which some people assume they are, you know, I was a former municipality worker, and there's a whole lot of, you know, teachers, everybody's in there.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, but thank you for fighting for us continuously, Ben Kalos, thank you.
And one thing I do wanna echo, well, first thing, and Sandrea's being polite, but, when I got elected, Homes and Isaacs were rated 86, uh, had a score of 86, they were the best buildings in public housing, and, uh, they didn't even, the monitor said they needed to get re-inspected, and what ended up happening is, while they were, while, when they came and said they wanted to do the infill, all the residents were like, what are you talking about, our building's in great shape? And they just walked away from the premises, they got nailed in federal court for this, cuz either they lied about the condition of the building before I got elected, or, in order to try to force tenants to eat infill so that a real estate developer could make money, they abandoned the property and tried to make it fall apart just so that they could make money on it.
Yeah, tell it, tell it, ask a question, tell it.
Yeah, so for those, uh, people, uh, who are watching me, I mean, I exactly know what infill is, uh, so can you tell folks exactly, when you say infill, exactly what were they trying to do?
So what Mayor de Blasio wanted to do is take children's playgrounds, and basically, let's say you look outside your window, he wanted to take a building, put it, put another building 40 feet away, and let's say you're in, Homes and Isaacs are actually some of the taller NYCHAs out there, they're 20 stories tall, so they wanted to put up a 50-story building, uh, build it 40 feet away from the existing NYCHA building, so that the tenants are literally just staring at the side of another building, and put the low-income people on the bottom of the building, so they can all just stare at each other in the shadows, and then put the wealthy people on top on the building, and it was gonna be, I think, 30, 20, 30, 70. What they're talking about, and so the idea is taking away all the playgrounds, taking away, uh, any public parking, uh, taking away anything nice that people in public housing have, and, uh, trying to wall in the public housing, so that they can gentrify the neighborhood and just make it look like luxury high-rises everywhere.
Yeah.
Wow, wow, so now, as, uh, Manhattan Borough President, you, uh, you're gonna be involved with, with a lot of land use, um, issues and such, uh, can you tell folks from your perspective, what is, what is wrong with affordable housing today, why don't we have it, um, and how can you, um, impact it as Manhattan Borough President?
So, what happened at Homes and Isaacs is completely unique, because if you go to any of the other public housing that they're talking about, uh, the politicians are actually trying to, uh, overrule the residents and do infill, and do RAD, and force the existing tenants out, so, let's be clear, I talked a little bit about this when we started, so, here's how it all works. Real estate developers make billions of dollars off the city, they get land for a dollar, they don't pay taxes, uh, they borrow billions of dollars from the city to finance buildings, they get grants of hundreds of thousands of dollars per unit, and so they're taking billions, and then they usually don't even give us the affordable housing that they promised.
Right.
At the same time, they're giving corrupt politicians thousands and thousands of dollars, and you know who pays for it? Dan does, Mike does, Sandrea does, Rock does, I do, and those politicians, they're selling out their communities so that they can build up their campaign coffers, so that they can all run for that iron throne, for that mayoralty, and that, that has to stop, that's why I said no to real estate money, I've always refused it, and why I wrote a new campaign finance system. And so folks like, uh, Stan can run on small dollars, you don't need to take big dollars anymore, you can get as many people as you know to give you 175, it gets matched 8 to 1 with tax dollars, and now folks like me, folks like Stan and others, can actually just run the right way without real estate money and win. And so, as Borough President, I'm going to go in and actually say to developers, I'm not giving you anything you don't need, so that means equity. So right now, um, I say to every real estate developer that comes to me, I say, can you build a school? Can you build affordable housing that's affordable for people in the neighborhood, or can you build services for homeless people?
Yeah.
And so I will tell you, that is why we built, uh, housing for homeless women and children a block from where I live, I think it's actually a block from where Sandrea lives too. Uh, we're building a, a shelter two or three blocks from where I live, and I think a block or two from where Sandrea lives, we live close to each other, uh, she's my neighbor and I'm very lucky, uh, and so, when people say affordable housing, affordable housing can be for people making as much as $200,000 a year. Anyone think that somebody making $200,000 a year needs affordable housing?
Absolutely not.
There's something wrong with this, where people earning $200,000 a year get affordable housing.
You can't afford a house for $200,000 a year, you, you don't need to be living in a house, you're like, I don't understand that, wow.
So, um, I wanna make sure that the affordable housing isn't geared towards the tri-state area, which is how they currently do it, I want it tied to your census block, so if people on the block make a certain amount, that's what it should be key to, so that we can keep the people there.
Yeah.
One other piece, and, and Sandrea touched on it, people treat it kind of like a, a closely held secret, but I don't think, I don't know if listeners know this, uh, I didn't know this, I was kind of shocked, uh, do you know what the income limit this year is for a single person to get a, uh, studio or one bedroom in NYCHA?
Hmm, no.
It is $63,700.
Wow.
So, more than half of New York City residents could live in public housing.
Oh, it's $63,000.
And I think that if we had-
Live in a studio, that would be?
In NYCHA.
It's $63,000 for one person, $72,800 for two people, $81,900 for three people, so that's two people making 40 a year with a kid, you got two kids, it goes up to $90,950, so NYCHA is there, and it's there for everybody, from, from those that are homeless shelters, but also, it can be there for middle-income folks too, and so I, I just wanna echo what Sandrea was saying, if folks realize that this was a community asset, and that it could be there for everybody, um, I'll tell you that in, in Europe, in Austria, they have social housing, where you have millionaires living next door to pensioners, living next door to people who are formerly homeless, and living next door to people who are justice-involved, living next door to police officers and schoolteachers, and I think that would change our city's fabric.
Yeah, it would.
Wow, yeah.
So, interesting, right, so, uh, just, cuz I want a little clarity on that, so the family, so the, so the single person's making $63,000 a year, right, that wants to take on a NYCHA studio apartment, how much would that person be paying for rent?
30%?
I don't have that number.
30% of their income.
So they be paying for it?
Yeah, 30% of their, their, whatever they, monthly, their monthly, yeah, but I mean, you could do the math, 30% of their income. I didn't make 100 grand when I was working, but I was making nice money, I was making more than $63,000 in hours, I was supervised pay rise, and I was living in public housing, I was in a one-bedroom, and when I moved to the two-bedrooms, my, you know, my rent went up, up, but yeah.
But it was 30%?
Of course, yeah, 30%, but then they also factor a little bit of the AMI, which is a problem.
AMI is what?
A little bit, the area median income.
Right, which needs to be abolished.
So they have a flat rate in the office as well, so they either do the flat rate, or they, it's, it's some kind of scale they have, cuz I was in the office with, go ahead.
I think, I, I don't know, I, I, we, we'll, we'll get an answer for you for your next episode, but I think for the studio, it'd be 1250 a month. If you were making that 63,000, if you were making, uh, less, if, if you were making, let's just say, 31,840, then it would be about 567 a month.
Okay, okay, so there's a formula that can work for everybody, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, public housing is for pretty much everyone, unless you, unless you, I mean, if you're a doctor, right, and you're making over 100 grand- And you're making over a hundred grand or so, but maybe not, but yeah. I mean, most of your municipality workers, people, correctional officers, officers, a detective, I mean, they're all walks of teachers, social workers, they're in public housing. They've always been in public housing.
Right, 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 right.
And people seem to think that it's just-
That everybody's all messed up and welfare and public housing.
And that's not the, no.
That they, that they portray, when it's actually a mixed bag of nuts.
And I think one thing I just wanna add in, which is just very broken, is just if we've got folks making sixty thousand a year or more in public housing and we're collecting twelve hundred dollars a month for a studio, that, that's pretty much market rate or above market rate in some parts of Manhattan, especially where a lot of public housing is. You can, you can, you can get a studio around twelve hundred on the Upper East Side. You can get that in East Harlem, definitely. And so the question is, how come a person at market rate making that can maintain the unit? But at public housing, they're acting like they're doing folks a favor and giving it away when they're not. They're charging rent and they're not even maintaining their property.
Yeah, wow. I have a question from the chat, Renee Simone. What are your numbers for affordable housing, not AMI, but dollar amounts? She wanted to know if you had, I guess, a range.
Sure. So right now, the city sets AMI based on the tri-state area. So the tri-state area, the area mean income is about eighty thousand a year for a single person. Now, that is like twice what an average New York City resident makes. So instead of doing the, the hundred percent or even eighty percent, the affordable housing that we're doing should be keyed to the neighborhood we're in, so it's actually preserving. So for most of New York City, that should be around the thirty to forty to fifty percent, which is between twenty-three thousand a year to thirty-nine thousand a year.
Yep.
That's the affordable housing we should build, building, not stuff for people making two hundred thousand a year.
Yeah.
Let me give you the max, the maximum income you can make and get affordable housing in New York City is two hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars a year. You don't have to take my word for it. If you type in HPD space AMI, they have a chart right there and you can see those numbers for yourself.
Wow, thank you.
A lot of folks don't know, that's why we don't have affordable housing. You know, it's skewed in such a way that it can't exist unless we radically change it. So I'm glad to hear you say that. A lot of elected officials don't say that or don't talk about it. And most of the public don't know, and we get left out in the cold.
Yeah, yeah. Can you explain your work on pandemic recovery? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure.
Please.
When the pandemic struck, there were a lot of politicians who went on social media, went on TV and just said whatever would get them on TV. And that's not how I work. So the, the first thing we did is we started a PPE clearinghouse. It was coronavirus@benkalos.com. It's still up and running. And we were working with people all over the city, the state, the country and the planet to source PPE. We got it for the city, for the state, for H plus H. And when they were unresponsive, we worked, went directly to the hospitals. We worked at the hospitals to set up masks at the various hospital names. And we were able to really save a lot of lives right then and there. We also needed more beds because we were concerned about people dying because we didn't have enough treatment capacity. So we actually opened three hundred and fifty beds on Roosevelt Island, at Health and Hospitals at Kohler. We opened an old wing that had been closed. And I know that they were gonna be turning that into a luxury real estate development. But we actually saved a public hospital, turned it into the Roosevelt Island Clinic where people were treated for coronavirus. And it's still up there, it's still got three hundred and fifty beds for treating people. We also went to hospital for special surgery, got another two hundred beds, got us to five hundred and fifty beds, which is basically our office alone got as many, half as many beds as the USNS Comfort. So listen, you don't need the name, you just needed our office. And then we got PPE and we tried to distribute it ourselves. And I'll say, we're not, we weren't as good at it as we could have been. But then we reached out to the community and said, would anyone like masks and hand sanitizer to give away? And I have to say, Sandrea has been handing it out, I believe on a week-by-week basis. Since the pandemic started, we provide the masks, the sanitizer. Sometimes I stop by, but she's there day in, day out, doing the service, doing the work, making sure that residents of public housing have the PPE they need. When she told me people were hungry, we brought in food. When we didn't have enough volunteers to distribute the food, we brought in volunteers from the community. When that wasn't enough, we worked with a group called Wildcat. They work with formerly homeless and justice-involved individuals. They get housing and they help clean our streets. They do amazing work. And you know what? At the beginning of the pandemic, no one was on the streets. So we pulled them off the street and they just had them doing food distribution. So that's a little bit of what we've been doing. When people were saying, don't get tested, we worked to make sure we got additional testing facilities. We opened additional labs, made sure people got connected with testing. And when the vaccine came out, our office connected people with vaccines. If you need a vaccine and you still can't get one, call my office. You can email coronavirus@benkalos.com. And we didn't have vaccines on Roosevelt Island. We brought vaccines to Roosevelt Island. And just to be very clear, one of the reasons I'm running for Borough President is because my district has some of the highest vaccination rates in the city, possibly even the country. And my district is overwhelmingly white. And if you go to communities of color, particularly black and brown communities, there are no vaccination sites. And the same people who paid for the pandemic with their lives aren't getting the vaccines that they need. So I wanna be Borough President so I can make sure that we actually have equitable access to healthcare. We can take on diabetes and the things that actually led to more people dying from the pandemic. Not only just the fact that they were most, more of our essential workers are black and brown than anything else. But we also need to make sure everyone has access to this vaccine. This vaccine may last six months, it may be a year, but we're gonna be in a cycle of needing vaccines. And we need to make sure that those on the front lines get the vaccines first, period.
There was something that was in the chatroom that, let me see. Hold on, Kim Thorey says, what is your platform for working with next mayor to get the funding allotted to my district for school?
Yes.
That is underfunded.
Yep, yep.
She's in Jefferson Houses, East Harlem, right?
Our schools are deeply segregated. They are worse today than they were during Brown versus Board of Education. In my district, I have about eighteen public schools. And nine of them are from kids from the neighborhood and nine of them are citywide. Now, some of them, one of them is integrated. It's called Ella Baker. It's amazing. It's thirty, thirty-ten. And it's incredibly integrated. But then I have a school across the street from another school. One school is ninety-nine point five percent black and brown. And the other school is, I think, eighty percent Caucasian. So I went to the mayor and asked him to integrate and he had no interest in it and I'm still.
So I want, I wanna get into the nuts and bolts of this real quick, Ben. So what do the kids in the Caucasian school have that the kids in the minority school don't have? In terms, let's start with, let's start, start in terms of programs. What programs do they have in the Caucasian school?
Let me put it this way, because we just had a huge fight. The, the school that I'm talking about is, so we have PS one ninety-eight, PS seventy-seven on Ninety-Sixth Street in Lexington, and it's across the street about a block away from Life Sciences. And so I asked the mayor to invest in Life Sciences and instead they truncated the school and then they co-located it with the charter. And so we just had a pretty big fight with the mayor over the co-location. And so ju-just to be clear, the charter, sorry, the, the, the Life Sciences School doesn't have a kitchen. It doesn't have a gym, doesn't have an auditorium. The gym and the auditorium were shared. The walls don't have paint on them. The ACs don't work. The computers that I bought them, the city wouldn't let them spend the money on it. The social services staff that the school wants to hire, the city won't let them hire. We ended up getting a one-page letter listing all the things that they would agree to fix in the school that in any other school I wouldn't have to do. Question the city asked me is, why are you fighting so hard for the school? None of the kids are from your neighborhood. And I said, because I represent.
That's incredible.
And, and you know what? And, and it, and here's, here's where people get this thing twisted, right? You don't have to be in, in, in a particular district to do what's right. You don't have to be a particular type or represent a particular type of, of area to do what's right, you know? Like, I don't, I'm not in that area and I feel like going out in front of the school and really campaigning, just because, you know why? Skip the part that it is a school. And focus on the part that these are children that are in this school in these conditions. And that's just wrong. You see what I'm saying? I don't gotta, because I'm from Queens, doesn't mean I could, can't fight for this school that's not in my district. Cause I'm not fighting for the school, I'm fighting for the children of the school. And, and we can champion that all day. You see what I'm saying? We, me, Ben, super activist, Sandrea, right? I mean, any of us can go, you know, anybody listening on the chat could go, you know what? That is just not right.
No, it's not.
No child should go to a school in these conditions. I, I, I'm gonna tell you something, Ben, I'm sorry, I got a little riled up. Cause I didn't expect that to be your answer.
You said they don't have a gym.
They don't have a gym.
A gym.
I just really, I didn't.
And do not worry about it because it's not your district, but he's a city council member, a city council member. So even though he has a district, he still works with all of the city. This is pathetic, it's crazy.
I mean, you can do what's right. You know what I'm saying? If you live in Long Island and you think it's not right, you should be out in front. You know, because once again, but we, 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 we depersonalize it when we say school. This ain't a school. What is the age group here we're talking about?
Kids, so this is thirteen to twenty-one.
Wow.
Thirteen to twenty-one.
The most formative years.
The formative years, where these kids should be learning financial literacy. Where they should be crafting a, 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 a career, the entry level of some kinda career that they might wanna get into, you know what I'm saying?
And sadly, the age that they're looking to fingerprint them if they do anything wrong. You, you need the schools, we need the schools. The school-to-prison pipeline, we need the schools.
And that's the, the other inequity, which is in, in in this, in my, in my schools where the majority Caucasian, no scanners, no, nothing like that. At Julia Rickman Education Complex, Mayor de Blasio administration, without telling anyone, showed up with scanners one day to a school that was majority students of color. And all that's gonna do is, is create criminal records for kids. We don't deserve it. And there weren't any problems. There was one incident, but we-
I'm sorry, Ben. They showed up with scanners for what?
Scanners for weapons, right?
They showed up and they were, they, they showed up out of nowhere with scanners to start wanding all the kids. There was, there, there was an incident with two kids. Incidents happen at every single school in the city, so they showed up with scanners. The principals reached out to me and said, we don't want scanners in our schools. And so I got Gail Brewer involved and the two of us crushed them and said, you cannot put scanners in our schools. You cannot treat our children, particularly in a school that has majority students of color, like criminals. And we beat them, but this is happening everywhere, all over the borough of Manhattan. Elected officials only ask one question. They ask, do I represent these people? Will they vote for me? And, and I can tell you that the kids aren't gonna be able to vote for me, their families aren't gonna be able to vote for me, whether it's for council or Borough President. But it's still the right thing to do and I will represent them. And I need to tear one other thing because people talk a lot about PTAs. And they say, well, there's PTA money, there's PTA money, that. Elected officials give schools more than most PTAs can raise. And so when I got elected, a lot of the money was only going to certain schools in the neighborhood. And you can guess which ones. And I said to every single principal, and cause money is power. And I said, listen, I'm gonna give you money no matter what. It's not my money, it's taxpayer money. So every year I give it, every school in my district, regardless of whether the kids are from the neighborhood, fifty thousand dollars. And that's, I ask them to use it on technology, but they can spend it however they want. And that's why when the pandemic started, Life Sciences had enough laptops to send every single kid home with a device from the pandemic. And there are still thousands of kids who have still have missed more than a year of school, who still don't have a device. I've actually introduced legislation with Eric Adams, the Brooklyn Borough President, Gail Brewer, the Manhattan Borough President, Jermaine Williams, the public advocate, to say every student who needs a laptop should be guaranteed one, along with free internet. And if they don't get it, by the time I am Borough President, day one, I will buy a laptop for every single public school student in Manhattan.
That's awesome, that's awesome. While we're still in education a little bit, let me just ask you this. Can you speak about your work on education, including expanding three K for all and ending the two Ks rule? I know you do a lot of work with that, but it'd be good if you can talk to the viewership, please.
So there was a two-case rule. Two kids got coronavirus, tested positive in a school. They took, shut it down for two weeks. And I do First Friday. I think about three First Fridays in a row, parents came and said, Ben, we want you to take the position on it. And I said, let me think on it, let me think on it. And one of the reasons that I do First Friday and why I do open office hours is because it makes me better at my job. And so I'm the only elected official in this race who came out in favor of pulling back the two-case rule. I believe now the mayor's agreed to do four cases and they have to be related. They have to actually be contact traced to show that the kids got it from each other. And so I think that's gonna go a long way to actually keeping schools open. Cause parents were telling me that just the schools, even if they were open, they were closed. So that's one piece. When the mayor said he was gonna do universal pre-K in twenty-fourteen, I helped him. I fought alongside him. And then he gave the upperhand side, which does include Holmes and Isaacs and Roosevelt Island, which includes, it's not public housing per se, but a lot of Section Eight sticky voucher tenants. And we got a hundred seats, a hundred and forty-three to be exact. And it turned out we needed a lot more. So we fought the mayor until twenty-seventeen, when he finally funded, fully funded. And we got one thousand, one hundred and eighty-three seats. And now everyone in the neighborhood has a seat for their four-year-old. And then the mayor in twenty-seventeen said he was gonna do three K for all. And he said he was gonna get it done by twenty-twenty-one. And as of a month ago, he'd only rolled it out to, I think, one-third of the city, half the school districts. And as I have a happenstance to do, I stood up to the mayor and said, you have to do this, you have to do it for all of Manhattan. Cause Upper East Side was missing it, Lower Manhattan was missing it, Central Harlem didn't have it. Because, a- and so I kept coming at him and he said, you know what? Ben, if we get money from the federal government, we'll do it. And so I went to Congress member Carol Maloney and said, we need this money. She got the money. I came back to the mayor and said, we got the money from Carol Maloney. Three K to Manhattan. And he said, I'll do one bedded, I'll bring it citywide. So now we're fighting to do it. Now, the problem is, the mayor's gonna come back with all the excuses for why he can't do it in Manhattan. Why he doesn't need to do it for Central Harlem, or the Upper East Side, or Upper West Side, or Lower Manhattan. And so this is where I need help from people who are watching or listening to NYCHA. If you know of an empty storefront, like an old Dwayne Reed, that's ten thousand square feet, let us know. If you've got a youth center on site that isn't being used during the day, let us know. If you know of a childcare center that has a three-year-old class that's interested, let us know. Email education@benkalos.com and we will work with you to get the seats in the neighborhood.
Awesome.
That's great.
Wow.
That's cool, that's great, that's great.
Before my daughter was three, but I'll tell you, as a new parent, it's really hard to raise a family here. And I wanna get universal childcare for anyone and everyone. So right now, we're gonna have three K. Once we get that done, I wanna get two K and then one K.
Okay.
And once you're, once you're done with family leave and everyone should be guaranteed family leave, be able to either stay at home with your child if you so choose, or you should be able to go back to work.
I agree with that, I agree with that. How old is your, is your child? Three.
Three.
Three. Wow.
She's, I think she's twelve. Yeah, she's twelve.
Oh, you have a twelve-year-old?
This is a twelve-year-old cat named Pandora.
Okay, unlike the cat, when the child becomes- Okay, unlike the cat, when the child becomes twelve, thirteen, they turn into an entirely different person. I'm just warning you.
Yep.
Ahead of time, ten years from now, call me, be like, Rock, you were right, you know, like they.
Oh, my God.
His cat is famous, trust me, everyone knows the cat, everyone knows councilmember's cat.
She's a big deal.
Pandora.
Big deal Pandora, right?
Big deal Pandora, I love it.
I have another question.
The first cat of Manhattan.
Wow. To, uh, to my knowledge, for me, and maybe you can help me out, but only our five Nycha buildings, which is Holmes and, and Isaacs are in the sixty-eight, sixty-eight A D Assembly District. Which to me is systemic because everyone across the street or next block over has a different assemblyman. I love my assemblyman, but it's, it was so hard, extremely hard during this pandemic because of our zip code to feed people and to get what we needed. And, you know, I had to reach out to the council member's office because, you know, other developments were getting boxes of food and fresh produce and it was real. I mean, we had the Isaac Center and they were helping more of the seniors. And then, you know, I had to work with them too and the council member to start feeding regular people. But why is it that we are up in East Harlem when everything across the street, everybody? Why is that? And how can I, if, is it possible I can get that changed?
Uh, now is the right time to be asking that question. The, uh, government just set aside four million dollars in the budget for the legislative task force. I read districting, it stands for Latfour. And in the next year, they're going to be, uh, asking people where to redraw the assembly lines and the senate lines. I think it's worth having a conversation with your current assembly member to just let them know you'd like to be represented by one of the, uh, assembly members for the east side, so that you, you don't end up in a situation where you're, you're in one zip code, but you're one of the very few blocks represented by one assembly member. Uh, so I think first have that conversation with that assembly member as well as with the state senator.
Okay.
And then. Feel free to, to organize and bring people out to Latfour. I think it's going to start once we get the census information back and, uh, actually very soon, so that, that is the time to start mobilizing and organizing.
Okay.
And, um, that's one of the issues we have when the city moves to doing things by zip code.
Yeah.
So under Mayor de Blasio, whether for good or for bad, he said, I'm only going to do certain things and, and zip codes, which are very large, uh, where they have certain poverty rates. So since, so for pre-K, he's like, I want to focus on neighborhoods and zip codes where there's a lot more low-income people than the Upper East Side, for better or for worse. And what happened is if you want integrated communities, if you want people to be able to live in Holmes and Isaacs on the Upper East Side in a wealthy zip code, what ends up happening is not only do you have to have, do, do the tenants end up paying higher prices for groceries.
Yep.
But you end up getting fewer city services.
Oh, true.
And, and so that, that is the, the counter argument and that's why I always fight so hard because.
Thank you.
Uh, what, what affects the, the, it affects all of us.
Yes, it does.
You, you know, the crazy thing is that, um, you know, I, I think we didn't realize this in the sixties, when they first started the zip code. I, I, I'm probably the oldest person at this table. But, okay, so do you remember, do you remember when, do you remember when the zip code was a new thing? Right? And they had Mr. Zip and they were telling her, right, you gotta put your zip code on the, on the thing, right? And who knew that that could be turned into sort of a segregation tool, right? Because before then, the neighborhoods, it was like when the phone, right? Before there was, all of New York was two one two. At one, all of New York was two one two, Long Island didn't matter, right? Before they broke it up into seven one eight and then Manhattan became two one two. And before that, it was what you saw on the honeymooners, right? I'm calling Bex and Hurst twelve and then with the whole operator thing, right? But the craziest thing about this all is zip codes have been used to identify, what, what do you call it?
Poor people.
Poor people, rich people, you live in a rich zip code. You live in a poor zip code, you know, wow.
Yeah, I'm one oh, I'm a one oh one two eight. Right. One oh one two eight. It, it's a wealthy zip code.
Yeah, wealthy zip code, so your houses are good, everything's good, right?
But I'm in public housing.
Right, right, right. And I live in one one, uh, one one three seven seven, right? Which is a, a good zip code, you know, that's Woodside, right?
What about one 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 zero six?
Yeah, see, that, that, that's a rough one over there. That's a rough zip code, you don't want no parts of that one. But if you have the one one, uh, oh, one 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 oh three, then you're off of Steinway Street in Astoria.
Right.
Right? So it just kind of depends.
Yeah.
The thing to also remember is that the federal government forced racist redlining policies, still redlining to this day.
Yes.
And so, um, not only did they have the zip codes, but they were also at the same time deciding which zip codes were the winners and losers. And, uh, making sure that they kept equity and credit. And they were able to build generational wealth away from black and brown communities. And also forcing black and brown people in, into, uh, specific neighborhoods.
I gotta tell you that, uh, the first time I heard about redlining, um, and I gotta give a big shout out to Manny Martinez. Manny Martinez, uh, and Claudia Perez, they do a show that they do on Saturday called Me Hating Me People. And he did a really big presentation on redlining. And it was the first time I had, and he had a chart on how the red line flows and the whole thing, you know? So, uh, big shout out to Manny Martinez for actually bringing that to, uh, to an understanding. Cause had he not done that, I wouldn't have understood what you're talking about right now.
And then he actually showed, uh, how Nycha, I saw that show.
Was redlined.
Most of the Nycha developments are in formerly redlined districts, which is no, which is no accident.
Which was incredible. Well, Ben, we have hit the hour. And it went so quick.
I have enjoyed myself, I hope your listeners enjoyed and I, I will stop by anytime. All of you are welcome to First Friday. I will come to your building, I'm happy to drop by your T A. Uh, if folks are interested in any of the things they heard, if they're interested in having a politician who actually tells the truth, because that's kind of my thing. They can go to kalos dot N Y C, K A L L O S dot N Y C. Folks can give me a call at two one two nine six zero three four four zero. And you can also hit me on social media, uh, at, uh, at Kalos, uh, on pretty much every platform. And, uh, this has been a pretty great way to, uh, spend a Sunday and I'll be listening to future One Nighter podcast.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Wow, that is, man.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you see, so that's real, Ben gave up his nummies like a two one two. And then you do at Kalos, many platforms, you can come to my office, because I tell the truth.
Invited you to First Friday.
That is so exciting.
Thank you again. Look at this picture, look at this picture, that's on, that's on council. Thank you once again.
He's very refreshing.
And this is historic, because this is our first elected, elected official to come on our show. On the One Nighter podcast. We've been a year and it's our first elected.
She produced that one.
I'll drop you a little, um, your, uh, links and everything in our chat and feel free on Facebook, we have One Nycha, the, the number one Nycha, and you can, uh, actually engage with some of the viewers if you like. And thanks again for coming through and coming through, and your staff is amazing.
So, uh, we have next week.
Sneaky, 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 you know, we're not going to tell, we, we, we.
Come on next week?
Hey, don't, don't be surprised, don't be surprised, my reach, I, 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 I might have a short reach like this, but I have a reach.
It's starting to get out of control now.
And when it's, when it's like, you know, when it's like desperado, I just hit stand up and stand, find some people in the pen for me, baby. There it goes, it's good.
I, I don't know what to walk in the building, next week I might come in social. What do you call it, um, social, uh, uh, not social, secret, secret service? Be out front like, okay, he's in. He's in, right?
We do have some candidates coming on this month as well, other candidates, but, um, for other, you know, um, I believe it's Queens and, uh, uh, district attorney candidate, Manhattan is coming on too soon, so. But no, I'm not announcing it next week.
Okay, all right, cool. So is there anything particularly that you're doing this week that you want other people to know about?
Uh, no, same old, same old, I'm still, I'm gonna be working with, trying to get some, uh, mayor candidates on, some more, one or two. Uh, it's their schedule, you know, I've vice campaigned and so it's really, you know, rough. And they're still doing a lot of forums too. They do know One Nycha and they're lit up with No One Nycha, they know about us, but, you know, so we'll, we'll work it out. We, we had one on originally way back, but it's time to bring like another two, because June twenty-second is coming, right?
So I, I would like, you know, like, uh, some of the candidates that I'm kind of, I have my eye on, come on, like I have my eye on Eric Adams.
Okay, yeah.
You know, I'm really kind of paying attention to him and, you know, we, we.
Yeah, one on one with us, but yeah.
And so far, listen, Eric, I met you twice already, so you might as well come on the show, knock it off. And then, um, uh, there's the other guy, that's the, uh, stockbroker guy.
McGuire, Ray McGuire, yeah.
I kind of had my eye on him a little bit.
Yeah, Spike Lee backs him, yeah. So, yeah, he's a looker, he's a looker.
But I can also say we have Maya Wiley coming out.
Yeah, she was supposed to, yeah, she was supposed to. I met with her people, but it just, it didn't pan out, I guess, because of campaign.
They're paying attention to her too.
She's gonna be in Queens, so you gotta come on out, come on out.
Sean Donovan might come on.
Right, 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 right.
Cause he could speak to the, the non.
Sean, I saw you do the One Nighter thing. I saw you do that, I'm just saying.
Might be able to speak about the, you know, that, that, uh, component that wouldn't be privatized. So that it doesn't have to be that, so I think the listeners need to hear that, so we can make, um, better choices and things, so. Yeah, but, you know, I'll be busy and, you know.
Join us Friday, uh, I'll be out there with Sugar Ray.
Okay.
Right by Jacob Reese, ten twenty-five Forty-first Avenue, Maya Wiley is going to be there. Uh, we're gonna try to, we're gonna interview her for the One Nighter show. And, uh, come on out and ask us some questions, uh, especially if you live in Queens, where, uh, don't let, don't let this candidate come and you don't come out there and ask what her views are on public housing. So come join us this Friday, we'll be out there at eleven o'clock. Uh, we have vegan food and we have the mayor, the candidate Maya Wiley out there with us.
By the way, how was that food you had?
Oh, oh, by Ladaska, yes, the food was great. I enjoy it, so yeah, we're gonna be, um, she's, um, part of our health, hip hop and politics show, but she made a very, very good.
Still working on my plate.
Yeah, my plate is.
Can the camera see?
I'm down to it.
Can they see it? No, no, you ain't touching my plate now, come on. Where at, where at? Okay.
That's by Ladaska, um, she's the co-host of the.
You hear me? You ain't touching my plate. I'm trying to be Santa fast, but I was picking at it. The guy, no, the guys already ate this, I'm gonna munch on mine.
Yeah, mine too.
Yeah.
I'm down to the.
All right, we about to lift off then?
We're gonna lift off.
One night to one people, how we doing?
One night to one people.
Let's lift off.
Let's do it, y'all.
Thank you, council member.